If you have any concerns or requests, please feel free to write out on the side of the table. So with this done, I would like to officially declare this public hearing over and I'd like to introduce Dick Bowden for the our live panel meeting. Thank you.
First of all, thank you very much to Connie and Diane. They have an available dissolution committee through the whole process. Certainly informed by the case of the proceeding. It'll take a couple of minutes though if anybody that needs a card to submit questions or wants to sign up on the panel sheet. Our itinerary and seating will be that first of all, we will refer the questions that you may submit to the appropriate individual or group that could answer that question. And then after the questions have been addressed, the person who would like to make comments and let's set questions, they will be on the side of the sheet where they would be asked to come forward and introduce themselves. And we're looking at about three minutes with the panel here. They will try to avoid some communication and ensure we can very gracefully address the proceedings. It'll take a couple of minutes to get the questions. For anybody that would like to submit a question, we have people who solve, we have time to be up to it. Keep going back there. Does anybody in this space, they may want to comment on the proceedings or give a We only started the first of these questions now and if in the first ability to encourage, we have duplication, I'll make mention of it. With Connie and more times after the filter off before putting it in. First off, for those of you who may not know me, my name is Richard Bowden, I'm the chief of police here in the north and hopefully facilitate the rest of the scene, the rest of the panel. This appears to be a panel, if you guys are paneling, it says the...
We can't understand you. Your mother...
All right. The, this card appears to be a panel to order a question, but I will read it as a panel. The town will pay more taxes, but we're not allowed to vote on the dissolution, ban of taxation without representation through the MRB. Would you counter on under art of seventeen egg laying which not the panel input?
You can mark that?
Okay.
I wish I had a better answer for you because this is certainly a common discussion in manners of dissolution. It's defined by statute. The statute actually talks about the manner being decided on a voted upon by those affected by dissolution. Many would argue that the people who live in the town outside of the village are strongly affected financially and otherwise by dissolution. But the statute itself specifically states that only those affected or only those residents of the village. So it's defined by statute, not, certainly not determined by our community affected by the process.
Thank you. The next question is, what will happen to the community set? Who will pay? First of the village board or number of village board is ready? Bought as to the provision for the period.
As we understand it, the community center has a pick away now and the city has a process sign up there. My personal opinion that the dissolution happens, it'll constrain the whole town if it leaves the practice, which should lie, still not allowed them to plan a further taxing people, so I think it's gonna be a tough spot if we do dissolve.
There was some comments from the going forward, there was also a quiet after the hearings. Does the town board give themselves a raise in a way? A way of perfectly dissolving? Brian Maykel, the county supervisor.
Right now, we're in the process, the initial, the initial outcome of our budget process so far goes, it was two percent across the board and it can still go down. So at this point, it's time to question based on handling it now, but it wasn't too too expensive for every player in the town at this point.
Thank you, Brian. How does dissolve in the village benefit the panel? Will town taxes go up or village taxes go down? I think that the presentation from the MRB group answered the question about town taxes going up and village taxes going down. I don't think it would be the US state. So this question is specifically addressed to Mr. Maykel. We've heard you say that the only way we can save money is to do away with the police department. Are you planning on doing that? But did you address that prior? In the sake of fairness, several of these questions are being addressed to the town board. We should keep in mind that the dissolution process is a village process, the planning is a village process, and the implementation of the dissolution is a village process. If and when the village dissolves, kind of dissolution, then the town is in a position that they find themselves having to deliver services to the people in the town and the rural village.
I guess the question was, is the town board gonna do away with the police department? First of all, we can clarify something. That would be a town board decision if this goes through. I cannot honestly say at this point the town board has never discussed that as an option. But the bigger thing is, we as the town board, we work for these residents of this community, whether you live inside or outside. And if the village is off, we will listen to the people. And what I've heard about it so far is, the village residents like the police department, and I can understand that. And I cannot honestly say which way to go if you were to, to do it the way it is now, as the adjustments have to be decided up to the town board. The thing I can say is, if the village is off, we will listen to the residents, we will do what the residents want to do, because if we work for you, it's not the other way around. And secondly, secondly, if the village, if the people want us to do this, we will provide the same type of professional, dedicated people to do what the people want. This doesn't do with our economy. We have economy, we have stock, we provide professional service, we have an ambulance unit that is very conservative, very, very good with the money, and we will provide the same services that the people of this community want. And I don't know who asked the question, but I don't honestly believe others that would do away with this stuff. But that's just stance of myself as a town board right now, and I'm very disturbed you guys. Thank you.
You know what, Brian, why don't you just stay up there for a minute? See if you can fix it all up there on the truck. To the town board, are you gonna follow the guidelines from the dissolution, dissolution committee for your interpretation?
The law sets out to allow the town board to, basically if the, if the village is off and goes away, we'll present it into the dissolution plan. And I have stated this in this in the paper, that the town actually has an option to completely throw the whole plan out of the window. Not gonna, not gonna hold anything back. We agree with that? Do I think we do that? Absolutely not. I wanna, I wanna say something with respect to this dissolution committee, as well as the chief, the mayor, and myself as the commander. These, these people have protected it. They were put into a meat grinder, no matter what they said or do, it was very difficult. And my hands are often each and one, each and every one of those individuals. Do I think the town board would take the whole dissolution plan and ask them to do away with it and not go by some of the record breaches? I cannot guarantee that because they did not do it to make up for the town board's lit time. But I know the town board listens to what people want, and these nine individuals are putting themselves in trouble with this plan. They put a lot of time and effort into that. And I honestly say, that would not affect the plan and not involve in some of that and it goes on the plan if you are for it to say. And I would hope that the time the town board will consider the plans that these people presented. And most of all, after this call, we can hear more of you guys as the state's residents as input, and we're very accessible and very determined to do with the people of this community, not with the town board. So we will listen and do what's best. Thank you.
Is it true the town employees are 48?
Is town 30 of your residents? I don't know if I can say a couple of things. We've been notified by the T2118, the highway department was in the process of forming a union, and that's really about the extent of what I can say.
One more. They will, they will change here and there. Okay. Would the town agree that take town taxes for village taxes if we cut the village in fact? Three or four?
There is, there is only a hint of that, but I should, I'm not sure if we can legally do that. I know we would do the best that's ever possible, but...
Take the town taxes from village actors?
Is that what the question is? Items three and four?
What's addressed with items three and four?
I believe items three and four are, I believe we see the DA, the DD, that's our highway fund, and some of the money that is on the taxes come from village residents and we do use on our highways. Would the board do a review? I can't answer that question at this time because that would be a board decision. I know we received a letter from the, from the village, so we married the review to that, and we brought the, brought the letter to the other board meeting, and we stayed with that letter at this point because, you know, there's no sense of moving towards something until we find out the, we're not necessarily in a position to. That's, that's what I can acknowledge at this time.
We'll give, just to make a little break there. And again, I want to emphasize that the issue is a village function, and it puts the town board in kind of a, a bad way if they're, we're asking them to speculate what they may do in the event of something happening. Just to thank you for the wonderful, to, full court of persons involved. Is it true that lines is the highest village tax rate in the county and one in the state?
Like in the county, certainly one in the state.
All right, thank you. Did everybody hear the mayor said that it may be the highest in the county, she does not believe that it's the highest in the state? If the plan to map this out of the village is gonna save money, then why aren't they already being done? Why was it paid this dissolution made changes very for village government? Rest there for more? Essentially, the alternative resolution is what we say the process, this question is, why isn't the board exactly, pretty limited of this already?
If we all know, a couple of years ago, CDR did a shared services study for, in the joint with village and in one central school, and they brought us several recommendations in. I know, we've been criticized because some of them we did not implement. One that we did have was the code enforcement officer in the department that at that time we were called full-time officer, and we did jointly with the town, became a full-time officer, which we didn't feel we said exactly, we said, called back to our department officer, which is the same thing. There were, there is a regulation for the movement of village justice, you can't do it until the village justice term is, is prior to village, oh, for village justice. So, you know, we haven't had four years, we needed in order to actually go from village justice to town justice. And that has always been one of our plans, eventually we would do it, but we had to do it for a week to go on. It did not recommend that we cover DPDW department or the border or sewer. They administratively didn't work because we, in all different locations, the school had an administrative office, the village had one, and we also had the township, so the courts together, and we had one, one village. It would have passed a lot of money to build more private place to put us all in, you know, just the village board, by the way, speaking of that, we didn't feel that was appropriate yet to time. So, over the years, we've, we've tried sharing, and we do, in our DPDW, we work with the town, we work with the school, and they definitely look at us, if you look at our Facebook, we will see the pictures of the town lines, dump trucks, the pictures of town souls, dump trucks, and there are people hating Butterman Street, Ham Street, etc. We do share, we bring that money in, as a, we use those people, trans, we recycle it. We can, this alternative sets that we have some point one DPDW, they're thinking about that, recommending going to a fire district, if we, if we alter it, which I disagree when I go publicly saying now, you have to go to the fire district because the town cannot get a fire department. But if we really do, we do not want to go to the fire district and put in another line of government when you go to the district act. We can communicate not fire department, as it is now, rather than go to the district act, we can go in the township. And I said, we're working with the town, we do think that was definitely over that thought. Yeah, and that it also included the loss of one sergeant, one patrolman, and at this point, a department enforcement, a school crossfire person. We would continue the background as we study this further. So we will be making the statements as in the show, meaning the projected alternative tax.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ray. What tax group will be responsible for paying the one-time cost of dissolution? Eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars? Oh, I asked Diane to address that. Anyone?
It's a one-time cost associated with implementation.
Yes.
The village will choose to essentially cover that expense?
Make your comment, please.
Well, it says, it says, which tax group will be responsible? And I believe that the town is responsible for, for elevations and village and other costs.
Diane, is that how you're trying to cover the, the huge breakdown? Yeah. In, in the whole plan itself, which is available on those websites that I mentioned earlier, there is a breakdown, if you will, of the cost allocations associated with the one-time expenses. Kind of tough to answer that question because some of the one-time expenses are town-related expenses and they're probably likely to be paid by town residents. There are some associated with village closeout, for instance, which would likely be covered by village residents. And how a village would choose, I would say it would be fair to say for both of those expenses associated with a village closeout, if you will, including the obligation to compensate or mitigate obligations to employees. It would be up to the village to budget for, or plan in some way for the covering of those costs. That could be done, there literally are two budget periods between now and the anticipated date of dissolution. So for instance, those costs could be split over two budget years. But they also would be offset by any unreserved fund payments that would exist at the end of the existence of the village. So there are different ways of the village for to handle that expense, but in some way shape or form, it would be reasonable to assume that that burden would fall on taxpayers.
All right, well, since the sheriff has been enough to give up his evening, and Mrs. Flair, we will gladly serve you with impressions. We will, I understand this staff office has a question to address again. Sheriff Hertz, I want you to cross the contract with the county for police protection. What is the current overall police level?
The overall budget at Sheriff's Office is sixteen plus million dollars, a hundred eighty employees. That breaks down to eight million for the jail facility, about seven point three, seven point four million for police services side, and eight hundred thousand for court security and hall adjustments. We have a contractor in Soul School District to provide the SRO, and our deputy sheriff cost is approximately the benefits, wages, FICA, retirement, about one hundred and twenty-five thousand per officer.
So if you were to, if you were to characterize the village's police services, what would you anticipate would be the cost of those services to the village?
Depending on what the village's residents and the village board were on, it would be the number of officers times approximately one hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, well, five officers would be six hundred and fifty thousand, you do what by about fifty-five-hundred-six-thousand calls a year. So one post is about five point two full-time equivalent, that's a general whether we do that. Depending on what the, like the bargaining agreement says, depending on what services you have, the village is still...
All right, thank you, Sheriff. I got a couple of these out of the way because they're duplicates. Both of these address the elimination of village taxes and therefore the increase of town taxes, and that is covered. And the amounts that they would decrease and increase are covered by the presentation will be there. Both town taxpayers, both taxpayers will sue all debt, and the town will get all assets. Why are the assets that the town won't need, that being sold, reduces debt? All right, we may have addressed that to the committee. We haven't had the opportunity to be interviewed. We have Sergeant Barashevich, the chairman of the dissolution committee, and maybe we could, if we could...
What we, what we figured out when we were discussing the cost of dissolution was that right now is one point three million dollars surplus in the village budget, which would easily take care of the seventy-seven thousand dollars in expenses. If you look at the equipment that the village highway department has... If you look at the equipment that the village highway department has, there really isn't a lot of duplication. There might be a payloader or something that might be able to be sold, a couple hundred thousand dollars. Yet all of a sudden, if it should be sold, it'd take care of many expenses that would be part of the village cost. We don't want to make a profit in the town by taking over the assets of the village and leaving the village alone to do that.
All right. Thank you, Sheriff. Who will control the fire district? The town board or the board directly from the fire district? Who will set their salaries, the base scale, and the balance? Would you like to discuss that?
The town establishes a fire district because the town can't legally be in the fire protection or provision of fire services business. It would create an independent taxing jurisdiction, if you will. It's what the mayor referred to earlier, is literally creating another form of government. And because it would have its own ability to budget and govern its own operations, it would also have the ability to tax, to tax residents to support those operations. Is that it?
Why are we spending a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on a new court? I think that's very simple. I will have to address that anyway. It was, it was necessary for the renovation necessary for the cabinet for the court or the land. Is that correct? Hundred and fifty-some dollars. They would be made renovations to the existing village, leaving now in the city hall, the cabinet for it. And I have one other, but I think I'll put this in the cameras, because it has a little editorial, and John signed it, so we'll ask him to step up. Do we have any more questions we would like to submit, or do we? Sure.
When I first got here, I signed that sheet over there, and I'd like to make a statement.
Well, we're coming to that now.
Oh, okay. The time for statements is on the clock.
Do we have any more questions we would like to submit? Apparently none. We'll move on to cameras. First, the first person who has signed to make comment is Denise Fiskowski. Now, last of you to come, if you come to the podium, and just please clarify your name, the, whether you're going to the town right now, and give your, your country.
Okay, I'm Denise Fiskowski, I'm a town resident, but I can refer to tonight because of the concern I have with the proposed plan in regards to the school and the relationship to that. First, I just wanted to definitely say thank you to the committee, you're in a very unusual position. I understand how difficult it is to try and make something out of very little sometimes. With the reduction of the staff in the police department, I need to refer to how this would be implemented and how it would impact students. It's extremely necessary for us to have a crossfire position. I understand that, from what I've seen, the crossfire position is one that's going to be eliminated. There are a lot of ideas and rumors, I don't know if the actual truth is as to how it's going to be staffed. One that I've heard is that they may have a police officer stationed as they are able. And that can be a monetary savings, but I would ask that, what other costs that would be? We have four-year-olds that cross that rabies corner in the morning. Four-year-olds don't stop and think, we could have them in the car, and send the car off to them. I've seen that, and that's a very big concern for me. So I would ask that the committee or the village board look at that again within the plan and plan for some mechanism by whether our students' election or the better school and safety measure every day.
We have Mary George.
When I signed that sheet, they told me I had two minutes. I don't know if I can squeeze it in in two minutes or not, but I'll do it like that. First of all, all I knew about this dissolution was what I read in the paper. And what I read in the paper was all I had to make deductions from. I worked for the state for thirty-five years, and I know, understand from the beginning that the state mandated that only the village residents could handle this dissolution thing. Now, what deduction I got, it's been all this country western music, where a guy in his belt separated, and after that separation, she got the gold mine and he got the shaft. Well, after I read what I read in the paper, according to what I did read about this dissolution, I figured the village residents got the gold mine, and us town residents got the shaft. End of story. Maybe some democracy somehow will enter this picture, and things will get divided properly.
Mr. George, I'm sure your concerns are well within your two minutes. Thank you. We have, next we have Johnny Carter.
Hi, I'm Johnny Carter, a lot of it on those border lines, lived here most of my life, my parents did. Oh, I know I'm one of the people that theoretically want the roads to dissolve. I'm here to save lives. That's what it's about to me. I think we've all lived here. You've seen what's happened in downtown. It's nothing to what it was like thirty years ago, twenty years ago. Businesses are leaving, taxes are going up here in the village, lots closing. I mean, I can't even imagine, my mother and father didn't drive. I don't know what they would do right now. Right, where are you gonna go shopping? So I encourage us all, let's move forward in this. We've got to save money. I work part-time down in New Jersey, they don't even stand towns and villages down there. In a lot of states, there is no such thing. There's the county, and then a local government. And they get everything done, everybody's safe. So I encourage everybody, let's get more, let's get a few more facts, right? I think there's potentially some money that we save. From what I know, besides having the highest taxes in the county, we've got the only paid bond to a fire guard. And that's, I think, a couple hundred thousand dollars. The other one, the facts we need, is when it comes to police protection, you talk about services, and one very interesting thing, we could compare the forces, the police forces in the Land County, and simply say, how many officers, how many people they serve, give us some facts, so that we know what it should be. And I would move forward on it. I think we've got some good people out of town board who are gonna ask some of these tough questions, right? And accept our input, and let us move forward and bring more money into Lions by allowing businesses to move back downtown, right? To make Lions a competitive place to be. We've got to have more businesses, we've got to take care of this type of situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Now we have Johnny Miller.
I'm a town resident, as Chief said, my name is Charlie Miller. Some of you know me, some of you don't like me, some of you do. I took the time to read this plan from cover to cover. I took the time to read the statute, which enables the village residents basically to ride on this plan. My first criticism is that state legislation. They set this up in a fashion that allows this to go forward in this manner. They have a quick cart before the horse, obviously. If you're going to discuss something like this, this plan should have been in place before any vote was undertaken. With all that said... Thank you. With all that said, I find it really hard to follow, Mr. George, but the alternatives to dissolution, containing the plan, reduce the taxes of everybody with one exception, that happens to be the Alaway Lightning District. My understanding is, the reason for that, is that it shouldn't have been set up as a Lightning District in the first place, and the failure to do so is now going to be correct there, and it is going to be set up properly as a Lightning District. I'm sorry, folks in Alaway, I consider myself, I guess, North Alaway, because I'm almost too relatively long. But if you take a close look at the plan, folks, the alternatives to dissolution save everybody money. May with all due respect, I think that should have been obstructionist. I think that it's necessary for us to move forward. I was on the school board from the beginnings of the joint municipal facility began, and I know that there were issues at that time. Everybody was upset, the towns are gonna have enough services, the villages are gonna have enough services, we'll all be fighting with each other. But as the mayor pointed out, that facility serves us all very well, and has great cost savings for everybody. So I would ask everybody to take a look at this plan, and please do, look at those alternatives to dissolution, because I think that is the way we need to be.
Is there a real one? A little beeping going from background is the two minutes reminder, and we're trying to pick two, and so far, everybody's pretty good, reminding with the (inaudible). This is Jerry Frin.
Thank you, Jake. He knows a lot of great rules, so, okay. First of all, I would like to make a committee for the word become expected to be a difficult task, okay? My concerns are not so much about the process, or my concerns are more about the process of dealing with the statutes than dealing with the findings. And I've had this prepared to read some stuff, it's getting into, but I'm still gonna read it anyway, because those are my thoughts before I came in, okay? I feel that the process of the settlement of the village will have a huge impact on the towns, town lines residents. I am an off-site village resident. This process has caused many hurt feelings about the town and village residents. Let's not lose focus on what we really do have. We are very extremely fortunate, have excellent protection from our ambulance, our fire, and police departments. One is not utilized, town quartering, until we need to use our services. When we purchased our property thirty-five years ago, we never thought we would see our taxes escalate to solve the village issues, especially when the town residents outside the village are excluded from voting on the dissolution process. There are still residents in the township, of which the village is part of the township. The township outside the village is not included, included is part of the village. Therefore, you've been excluded from the decision-making process by being unable to vote, and the process affects all the residents within the township of Lions. Only some of the Lions residents were able to vote, those who reside within the village. Government should own from the top down, not from the bottom to the top. Travel to state, state to county, to town, to the village, not having the village dictate policy elsewhere. Therefore, petitions have been developed to present to our government and/or the ACLU, and if people within the township, whether they live inside or off-site the village, are concerned about the cemetery process, I am asking you to pick up a petition from me and collect signatures or sign only petitions before you begin the season. If you're concerned, you need to get involved. I would like to get at least twenty thousand pairs to collect signatures and return them to me by November fifteenth. So I'd like you to send them to the appropriate level of the government or activist group. The petition will be used twice. We'd be under signing, support the founding statement. We were unable to vote on the dissolution of the village lines, New York, and we have a tedious process, is proposed unfair taxation to Lions' own residents, who we believe is taxation without representation. I'll be locating the document, anyone's interested, after meeting, and thank you for listening.
Well, you're live. Mike, the appropriate time to take the mark, correct, to do here is video of the dissolution meeting, and informational meeting, to see this such a proceeding, and make them available for those who have not been able to attend, or would like a review, review all the proceedings in the dissolution process, from beginning and, and posted on YouTube. Yes. And also posted on the dissolution dashboard website, and you would video. All right, we have Keith Briger.
I live in the town, but you wouldn't know it, because don't even know what the public believes in this year. Anybody? How many kids did you know went there? All of them. All of them. I'll tell you, there's a lot of kids there. It was a great event, just like COVID days, just always get involved in that. But I looked at this thing, and like Jerry, I had intentions of reading this whole thing, so I printed it off, and that was stupid. I was like, but anyhow, here's some of my key concerns we gotta take away before we make a decision. Not that I don't trust the town board, because I live in the town, but there's many statements in here the town board will, the town board will. So it depends what the town board wants to do, and I know this is who we have to say, but there's a lot of statements like that. This state, this state aid, do you believe for a minute they wouldn't take that away? I would admit. And the state aid was so key in these conversations, and without the state aid, the tax rates went crazy, crazy. We can't afford that, and I know that down in the village, but still, overall, majority of the residents, the taxpayer, are way up above the aid, and I don't believe for a minute they would take away, because they have it. I really like and recommend an alternative. I think that, you know, the village board gets criticized, they didn't implement, you know, this reduction or that reduction, it's always easy and high to say, I'd I've never sat in that as board or the town board. And nor is that that thing going on. Denise, I thought you were from France. Anyhow, I'm gonna wrap up here. I think they tried to deliver, and I think they have a good plan here thanks to the committee. I really like the alternative. And I have one last thing for the community center. I really thank the community centers. I have a last at this community. And that for sale side of the four wow. There are 300 of us, 300 of us in the community. Put up $1,000 a piece, you could buy this house. Easily. And this is key to Lyons, just like the uptown is key to Lyons. Just like the police department, the fire department, the highway department, it's all key. But this is more important to us for our kids. And I think that's really something that's on the agenda. Thank you.
Eric Pique with the fire.
I'm Linda Fayon, and I live in the village with my brother. And we both are property owners. And I just wanna say that I do like what I see. I can handle the part about changing some things and the alternative to the dissolution plan. I don't like the unfairness to actually people who are so much more, who live outside of the village. Yeah, I'd like to have my money better handled, and I make the pay so much, but I don't think it's fair. And I just appreciate the opportunity to say what I think. And thank you very much, Phil.
And Ann Selena.
Hi, Ann Selena. I live in the village, but I often live in the town. So I'm really torn. You know, if I vote for dissolution, I'm usually one chance to go way down and the outcome increase, skyrocket. So I have to ask myself, how did we ever get to a 2 million dollar budget here in the village? And how did we ever get to 15 employees? Both summer park time and summer on full time. But nevertheless, it's a small town, it's a lot. And as we all know, the state keeps planning on reality. As far as I know, next year's gonna be 14% for pension for most of our employees, except the police, which is gonna get 30%. That's a lot of money to pay. I don't know what the town will do, if it ever told us. And that's, to me, maybe we're going from the fine payment to the fire. I wish I knew, I wish we got some more data to go on. But I am concerned about the state not coming through with the $444,000 a year. I'd be surprised if someone at once, 10 years down the road, would say most of the savings are coming off the back of the DPD. And I don't really think that's fair. If we're starting over from day one, why is it only they are considered new employees? If you're established in the fire district, it seems to me that they also will be new employees, same as some of our other people. But I do think we need to give everyone a non-severe chance. That's all I have to say.
Paul Markowitz.
Good evening, everybody. Paul Markowitz, Team for Local 118. First of all, the committees, the board members, everybody. Stellar job and effort. I don't know in the end that it's perfect for all of you, but nobody can discount the effort that these fine folks put into what is being talked about. To go back to what one gentleman said earlier, fast track. Yeah, this whole legislative process has put you in this predicament. It's absolutely terrible. It started at the top of government, it's pretty much down here. I gotta tell you, when I first came in here, I wasn't quite sure what I was gonna talk about. But after listening, it became quite apparent, and it happened very quickly. I got in doctor's, I talked about key assumptions. And then I listened to the presentation, I talked about some likely cost shifting redistribution illustration anticipated to be established. When we really got here, at least when I got here, was a whole bunch of uncertainty. Increased taxes here, reduced taxes there. At the end of the day, what direction are we really going in here? I don't think that anybody is really certain about the future at all. And that's known to spread to the folks on either side of the table here, the people involved. But it is, it is true. I see the looks on people's faces, I share comments in the crowd. It's more of uncertainty than anything right now. So as a labor organization, and I'll clarify a question that I'm reluctant to ask, and that is, we are moving forward representing the folks, then you know the town on your pardon. Right the last thing for that, when the current public employees relations board out of Albany will actually certify that, at some point, we kind of official on pardon will relatively soon. We'll both sit down, we'll work out a fair agreement with the local town. Whether that's current employees, future employees that get created in, or placed in by purr, we'll deal with that process. Again, even in that arena, uncertainty. I will tell you, our relationship with the village has been exceptional, to say the least. We have worked with them to, especially in the arena of healthcare, taking care of not only union people, but the non-union people, in lowering the cost and finding alternatives. I feel more than I, I'm paying. To lower the cost of healthcare program. I will also say that we have a tentative agreement going into 2014, where there is a wage increase for those employees. And further, that because of taking advantage of the small group suite plan, we're actually reducing the cost of healthcare for the village folks. And I know that the mayor doesn't know that, but we'll get a correspondent telling that fairly soon. We have a great working relationship right across the board. I work with towns and villages across the state, throughout with international public officials. I can tell you this, that towns and villages, at least in my opinion, operate very differently. Their demographics, their geographic locations, they're very, very, very different. And I can tell you, those bodies, the legislative bodies, work best when they're independent. I don't think there's any dispute that we can always pursue and do things better and more efficient right across the board. We're really partners in that. To think that dissolving the village is the answer or the solution to the problem, I would think again. I grew up in the village of Webster. I live in the town of Ontario. Can't wait to move back to the village of Webster, because I love the village. In this case here, I think dissolving the village is the piece of building the baby out of the bad water. Thank you, please, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I was out of town board for 24 years. And very near that time, we basically took over the Yanis Department. Later down the road, we took over the village chair of the Lightning Hall. Later on, we took over the city office. I'm a town resident. Last thing I wanna say is my taxes go up. But I think with the restructuring of some of the parts, renegotiating existing contracts, and consolidation of certain jobs, that the town board can keep the town taxes down. And we can open just one of the lines. I mean that as far as, when somebody asks me where I'm from, I say Lyons, New York. Not the village, not the town. Thanks.
Richard Sand King.
You left.
You left?
I left.
All right, you're welcome.
Well, I basically with Jim and Brian similar statements. And so I just don't wanna read.
Mr. Sam Kelly has... You don't need to clap. I hear Walter Ferguson. Walter, would you like to read the character?
I would read the line.
All right. We just moved Walter from the three by five to the full size.
You called me a job as early as you could, you don't know. My name is Walter S. Ferguson III. I live in the town of Lyons. Live out there on Banshee Road. Mom and dad raise five of us young ones here in Lyons. They live the lines, won't follow their lives. First of all, I wanted to know what happened? Why did the people of village Lyons decide to dissolve the village of Lyons? What brought us here? Why did this come up? What happened? Was it lack of services, too much money, corruption? What was it? Can anybody answer that?
$24 a house.
I'm sorry?
$24 a house.
Okay, so what's cost, yes?
I think that's a motivating factor.
Okay, so that's, okay, thank you. I live in town Lyons because I did not want the services nor the associated costs of living in the village of Lyons. Why, I don't understand. Why should the former village residents be provided with services that the town never had? In other words, why should a town person provide aid for, help aid for, services for a village resident? If they wanna be part of the town, fine. Then enjoy the services that the town provides. In other words, I don't have a long course meeting with folks. Do a wonderful job. I could not and would not do your job. But we don't have a town of Lyons Police Department. We have a village of Lyons Police Department. So that's a services provider to the village resident. Why is it that the town should pay for services for the village? I just, I don't understand. It's kind of like, if I had somebody that mowed my lawn, I would thank you very much. It sounds like my name is a dummy. If I had someone that mowed my lawn, and I didn't like the cost of them mowing my lawn anymore, so I fired them. And now I expect my neighbors to pay for somebody to mow my lawn. I don't think it's right. Thank you.
Can I get a quick, Mr. Ferguson, for what you're doing? Well, it would seem that the proceedings festivities are done. Everybody conducted themselves. And it could be a very emotional issue. Ladies and gentlemen, I think that there was a lot of information laid out during the evening. Maybe more than everybody would be able to digest at one sitting. Again, I have to... Have to suggest that you go to the websites and maybe view some of those pre-photos, video recordings. And Thursday, you wanna comment here?
I wanna make a comment, and then Brian's gonna follow up the last word. But the first brought up about the police department and about the crossing guy. Just letting you know what the committee was thinking when we came up with our recommendation. We were thinking we could have like a best sergeant who was an actual full-time police officer with arresting authority and could actually help in a crisis situation. That they would still be coming to work in the morning. We're not gonna let kids cross the street by themselves. And it's never the thought that we abandoned the kids that don't get run over at the crosswalk. We figured that a best sergeant could take care of the crosswalk in the morning and also at the afternoon. And that we could have a police officer instead of constantly driving around to pick up cheaters, paying time to also give out tickets for parking violations. We realize that's very important. And that's why we, the very worst decision we made is we thought that the police department was still a valuable asset to the village and to the town. I do live in the town, I live about two miles outside the village limits. I was broken into about two years ago. And we put up a security system. My dog set it off a year ago. And it took half an hour for the sheriff's department to get to my house. I'm assuming that if there's a police officer sitting on the water street, and he got a call, he could be in my house in five minutes. So I have no problem paying for police protection. But that's something that the town board is gonna have to decide down the road. But we are not abandoning the kids and since that was the first thing that was brought up with my comment. I just thought that you might wanna go where the committee came from and say.
Well, that's a good saying. I'd like to say something just in closing from this whole process. Because most people are in fact, if you guys are in, whether you live in the village or outside the village, you know it's all a life itself in town. Sorry, I personally agree with you to this point. I sit at the county, and right now, we're just going down the lines. I think we're here to be watching this, watching this, how we're gonna handle this whole dissolution process, whether we dissolve or not. I think the important thing here for us as a community is whether we dissolve or not. We have learned tremendous amount of information. I fully understand much better what the village board goes through, what their life's going through, what they do. I also understand better what the outside people are going through in respect to the village. So this is kind of learning process for all of us as a community. And the thing that we need to take away from this, whether we dissolve or not, is how we react as a community, how we react as smart ones. I'm very proud of this community. I'm very proud of the people that we have here. The way we react, the way we come together when it happens. It's important, and we are top notch. I love our very friend, Top Notch, who's come in with an excellent job as well, everything I'd like to say, and do in the public. What's important is whether we dissolve or not, what's important is how we treat one another in this country. How we treat one another on this street. How we handle this as a nation. So if we dissolve, the town board, the local residents, the people who's happened, may be best for all the people in this community. And if we don't dissolve, if we don't, if we continue to go into fair directions, we'll continue what we had. We did some fair services as the mayor's already. And if that's the decision of this community, that's the way we'll go. We'll give it 100% effect on both sides of the table, village and town, and we'll move this community forward. We have a lot of great things coming down the road, but we're working on both sides, town and village, to make that happen. Because you guys are this community. You guys deserve the best from these two boards, as well as this community. And again, I just thank you for each taking the time to come out for the ones who asked the questions. And let's move this community forward as Lyons people. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I'm trying to connect to my mayor, so she can finish the business of the board.
Does anyone else wanna make the cabinet before we close the public hearing? Or do any of you just commit the cabinet? Could I have a resolution to close the public hearing from the village board? Our public hearings closed. I'd like the village board to establish a debate. I would like you to welcome the president of here tonight. And the second presentation that we came up to.